Do we have the recording ready to go? Then, um, good afternoon and thank you for being here. It's six thirty-four. The zoning commission for the city of Castle Hills is now called order. We'll go ahead and take a roll call.
Commissioner Mojica? Commissioner McCormick? Commissioner Jackson?
He's there.
Chairman Solis?
Here.
And Chairman Bueller.
Alternate, but yes, I'm here.
Alternate Kim three, we appreciate you being here. At this time, we usually go with our citizens to be heard. Do we do have one Harry? Serna, it looks like. Um, please come forward, sir. Oh, Ha- Haley, I apologize. I did not look at the first name.
Harry's a nice name. Well, thank you all for having us tonight. Um, I'm here speaking on behalf of, uh, the Saint George School and Church. And as you know, they're neighbors of yours and have been for a long time. And today we're here for a project that we'd like to construct, which is a modular building. And it's just basically another, uh, classroom building to house activities that they already have on campus, music, library. And, um, putting their best foot forward, they put together a design team, not just, you know, bare minimum modular building company and that's it. Um, so they have a demo team, modular building design team. They have a civil engineer on staff, landscape architect, architect, myself. Um, and I'm really more here to coordinate, not so much design the building. Um, but I did help with the additions that we made to the building and embellishments to, um, enhance it and be good neighbors, uh, to the neighborhood. So, um, I don't know if we can bring up the presentation or if y'all just want me to kind of narrate through.
Um, this one is just a public hearing. So you, will we get to the next section is when probably you come up and speak? Yes, sir.
This was item two, citizens to be heard.
Right.
So the, you know, there, the, the presentation on behalf of Saint George would be appropriate to do either before or after the public hearing. Um, so that it's not repeated. So appropriately would, would be to, um, ask if this lady would like to wait and do her presentation during that public hearing under item four. Uh, and then y'all can see if there's anyone else signed up for citizens to be heard. If not, move to the approval of the minutes and then open the public hearing.
Correct. So. We'll be back.
All right, sounds good.
And so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, and, uh, with the closing here at six thirty-six P M. Close, closing citizens to po- citizens to be heard. That is correct. I apologize. Uh, at this moment, uh, let's move on to the consent agenda with the commission meeting from May seventh, twenty twenty-four. I'll need a motion. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have new business. And now we will open the public hearing for an application for a special use permit from Susan. Always on behalf of Saint George Episcopal Church for a special use permit to install a modular building for school facilities at sixty-nine, zero, zero, six, nine, zero, four, West Avenue, Castle Hills, Texas, seven, eight, two, one, three. More particularly described as lot twenty, block nine, county block five, seven, seven, eight. Saint George Episcopal Church subdivision according to plat thereof recorded in volume ninety-five, four, seven, page one, one, nine. Deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas. The, um, presentation now we can adhere to. And we have our booklets in front of us. If you want us to follow or how would you like us to proceed?
Um. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking at. I can bring my laptop up here and follow along with y'all if that's fine, or if we would. I don't know if y'all are able to project it on the T V, but I can just talk through the project.
Sure, let's do it that way.
Okay, it's fairly simple. So I think, um, the information contained in that booklet will be, uh, pretty self-explanatory once I.
Pulling microphone a little closer, please.
Is this better? Okay, there we go. Great. Okay, um, so I'll go ahead and go over the project as a whole, and then the contents of the booklet, I think, will be kind of obvious for what each page is for. Um, but overall, this project is a modular building that we'd like to add at Saint George, and we have a design team, as I had mentioned, um, to provide design services to enhance the building and be good neighbors within the neighborhood. Included with the modular building is an adjacent garden, and it's pretty expansive and extensive. And we also have landscaping along the fencing that's going to enclose this building and garden as part of the school campus, uh, security enclosure. Um, all the materials on the building are going to match the existing materials on the school buildings. And so we are taking those aesthetics into consideration and trying to help everything blend. And, uh, the use of this building is same as the rest of the school campus, which is educational. And this will be library and music room building. Uh, no actual classrooms will be in this building, and it'll also have restrooms. And we don't have any students being added since there's no classrooms being added to this building and no increase in traffic flow is expected either. Um, so that pretty much sums up the design of this project. And so I'll go ahead and take any questions y'all may have or be happy to elaborate on anything. We also did include, uh, light fixture selections and the photometric plan to show that our lighting fixtures are all downlit and well-contained within the design area, so not to have light spread outside of this, uh, design area on the property.
Skip? Sure, go ahead. Start it off.
I understand the building. I understand the building is forty-six hundred and sixty-two square feet. How large is the deck to be surrounding the building?
The deck is, um, sorry, I don't have an exact number for you. I can get that to you. I believe it's, uh, twenty feet by about seventy-five feet. So we could say about fifteen hundred square feet.
Fifteen hundred square feet. Do you know whether that was, that's intended to be permeable or impermeable surface?
The entire project will be, um, pervious. So the decking will have grade underneath it. There will be, um, no foundations poured for this project. Even the landscaping is going to be pervious.
Foundation poured for the project?
It'll all be on, on piers.
Okay. Is this going to increase the student load of the school?
No.
And, uh, why do you say that?
Um, the services being offered in this modular building are, uh, services they already offer on campus. They're just providing a larger room for those. So their library space, um, they're providing a, a new library space with access to the garden. So that way they can choose to have outdoor reading time or indoor reading time and activities like that.
Well, there's a previous library space in the existing building, right?
Correct.
What are you going to do with that? Board it up?
So I might have to ask y'all a quick question here, but I know part of the space, um, has STEM learning. And the other part, I don't know what y'all converted that to, or it's current library. It's their current library. So do we know? Okay. Okay.
You probably need to come up to the mic, please. I apologize, sir.
I, I can repeat it.
Since everything's recorded.
Oh, okay.
Sure.
Your name?
My name is Thor Quanda. I'm head of school at Saint George Episcopal School. So as, as Haley was saying, the project will afford us the opportunity to move our library into that new space. We'll also have a music classroom and a Spanish classroom in there as well. Uh, the library, the current library space is being repurposed into a STEM learning space. Uh, we're expanding that programming. Um, and basically what this building does is allow us to expand our current programming um, to our current population of students. Um, we also have, uh, it alleviates some overcrowding on campus, um, and, and helps us allocate space for teachers better, teachers and students.
Okay, I understand you, you've arranged, uh, a hundred and nineteen parking spaces to accommodate this new building and gra- and grounds, right?
Um, we haven't added any parking spaces.
You, you're dedicating a hundred and nineteen to that building?
Are you talking about the occupancy or the number of spaces?
Talking about the, the, the number of cars we'll have on campus.
We're not expecting this building to increase the amount of cars that they'll have on campus. So we aren't proposing any added parking.
Okay. What I'm trying to get to is you got forty-six hundred square feet you're going to put on, on campus. And you're telling me there's not going to be an increase in students, there's not going to be an increase in teachers, there's not going to be an increase in cars parked on campus. I don't understand what you need the building for, if that's the case. I expect that there's really is some kind of increase in student population, teacher population and so forth, that goes along with having this new building on campus. And I can't, I can't see where that's coming from or how this, how that's going to be put on campus. If we, if we don't have an increase in population, we don't need any place to put those students and people, then we don't need the building. So I'd kind of like to get that sorted out.
So perhaps some clarification in reference to, um, present student population, present student capacity, uh, and what you anticipate for the next five years in terms of growth, or do you?
Sure. So we do not anticipate, so current student capacities, current student enrollment this year was five hundred and forty-five students. Our projected enrollment for the coming school year is five hundred and thirty-eight students. So basically the same number of students. We typically have three sections at every grade level. Um, and that's junior kindergarten through eighth grade. The one exception to that is in senior kindergarten, we have four sections. But, um, every grade, senior kindergarten through eighth grade remains with a cap of sixty students at every grade level. So we are not increasing the number of students that we have currently on campus.
So there is a cap?
Yes. So, and we've had internal discussions that have stated that we desire to remain at the same size because we want to preserve our community feel. And so we are, uh, we are consistent in that wish to keep our same profile from a student population standpoint. What we have done in recent years is we have expanded some of our programming, particularly at the middle school level. So we've offered some new programs over the last year and a half or so, particularly art, music and technology. And we find ourselves in need of spaces to accommodate those new programs. Um, and so that leads us to a place where we desire this building to help us deliver the program in a more effective way.
And what's the student population now?
Our current enrollment for the past school year is five hundred and forty-five students. We are projecting five hundred and thirty-eight students in the coming school year.
And what's the cap?
Um, so I think if you, if you work out mathematically, I, I would need to put pen to paper exactly. But, um, if you have sixty students at a grade level, senior kindergarten through eighth grade, plus another thirty-six at junior kindergarten, the most we would have on campus is about five hundred and seventy, I want to say.
So we look at this in five years, we're not going to see more than five hundred and seventy students?
No, we don't anticipate adding additional sections. We're not, um, going to have more than a certain number of students at every grade level. Those things are going to be consistent. Um, and what we are endeavoring to do is deliver our program more effectively through having better space via this building.
Okay, have you had more than five hundred and seventy students at any time in the last five years?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
My concern is, I guess, where, where the water is going to go. There's forty-five hundred feet of new roof and, and also some, some decking around it. As to where the water is going to go instead of into the ground.
Mm-hmm. Um, it is proposed to she- to sheet flow on the ground only because we're not adding any, um, impervious coverage.
Well, by definition, the roof's impervious.
There's already a house there now that's being demolished. So this, this building is taking the place of actually two house buildings. They're going to demolish both of them, one for the modular building and one for the garden space.
So rough, roughly the same size, I guess, or roof, et cetera?
It's, it's a little less, about, he said six hundred square feet less.
All right. And this ground is relatively level, yes?
I think so.
Um, yes.
I mean, was there much grade change?
Uh, less than five percent, so it's.
Less than five percent.
Okay, uh, that, thank you.
Thank you.
So, let's go back to, to the utilization. School hours only? Yes.
I'm going to say yes, but I'm going to look backwards again.
Your board has approved this cap and it stays in place?
Yes.
I'll let Thor speak to the school matters.
There you go.
Yes, we had conversations at the board level earlier this year to look at our size and make a determination that we do want to remain at the particular size and scope that we are currently.
Is the board looking at any acquiring any other properties?
Um. No, I don't think so, not at this moment.
Is that in writing or is that by just what you feel?
I don't think that's in writing.
So, um, back to utilization. School hours only, shut down after five, you don't anticipate using it on the weekends? Or do you?
No, I don't anticipate using this on the weekends. We don't currently use comparable spaces on, on the weekends. Um, we offer aftercare to five-thirty. Um, so it's possible that students might be in the building until five-thirty as part of that program. Um, and then typically we turn our campus, uh, over at the end of the day.
Was a traffic study done or was it not necessary? I'll ask our staff back there. Was a traffic study necess- necessary to look at that? Obviously we have traffic already. There's people lined up and directly onto. So I sup- East Castle Lane, yeah. I just want to know, there wasn't a requirement for a traffic study to impact?
Not at this particular stage. It could be, um, required at A R C.
Why would we zone something without a traffic study?
The code says a T I A is for A R C.
What does it mean?
The traffic impact analysis is for the architectural review committee.
And so this goes next to them?
Yes, that's, well, city council and then them. And then city council.
Done deal. Correct? If it goes to city council and they approve it, then it's moving forward.
The use is, sir. The actual nomenclature of the building is up to A R C and city council.
Mark, you want to expand on this? Why are we don't have a traffic study in front of us when obviously what we zone or don't zone is dependent on the traffic that goes through the area?
Not necessarily. The, what Mr. Zamaron said is correct, that the, uh, the wording in chapter eight of the Code of Ordinances, which is where the, uh, architectural review committee provisions are, specifically allows the architectural review committee to require a traffic study if one is indicated. So the, the steps are, the applicant needs to come to the zoning commission to determine if the zoning commission agrees with the use. That's what zoning determines is use. The implementation of that use then is up to the applicant to go to the architectural review committee for a non-residential use. And that's what this applicant is scheduled to do sometime later this month. If, of course, the commission makes a recommendation to the city council and the city council acts at next week's council meeting to, um, approve a special u- a special use permit. Um, so this evening before the commission is this question of use. I think that the questions that both Mr. McCormick and Mr. Bueller and you as chair have asked are directly related to the use. And I think all those questions are appropriate, but the traffic study is under the purview of the architectural review committee because that's where it is in our ordinances.
I just think that we, um, you know, that's, that's certainly something that is to be at least considered when you look at the area. Um, presently. So how do you handle traffic today? What is your day lineup? What does it look like? How do you have people flow through today?
Yes, so we utilize two different drop-off and pickup points on our campus. We, uh, one is on the East Castle Lane side. And then the other is on the, uh, West Avenue, uh, entrance to campus. And so we s- we schedule arrival um, between certain hours, um, to mitigate traffic as best we can. And we have staggered dismissals at the end of the day to release students at different times, again, to mitigate, uh, traffic flow in the area.
And the lights and everything else will come into the A R C? When you talked about the lights going down and everything else, that would be the architectural review.
Yes, the light fixtures?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Are there any other questions?
They might have been included in this package, actually, if you wanted to take a peek at them.
As a former member of A R C, I understand.
Okay.
Chairman, we're, this is go to A R C on June twenty-fifth for this month.
Okay.
Let me ask if it's, if it's pertinent to suggest that we, uh, suggest the council impose a limitation on cap, uh, student population for the next five years at five-seventy. And wouldn't, it doesn't sound like from what you say that that would have any impact on the school.
Is the applicant willing to say that they will stay at the cap for the next five years is basically, I think, what he's saying? Uh, or asking?
Sure, I think I understand the question. Um, so yes, I think our goal is to remain at our current size and our current configuration of, uh, three sections. We typically have twenty students in each section, so whatever that math works out to be, I think it might be five-seventy-two actually, if we're being very precise. Um, so if that's, if five-seventy-two is that number, then yes, we're comfortable living within that parameter.
Let me explain the reason that I'm suggesting this. One is that there's colossal traffic problem over there at the school in the morning and in the evening, both day, both times of day. We have pickup and delivery of kids. And the other is that we don't have any information available on what's your, what's your proposed size will grow to. And I, I can't see that, that, that there's a circumstance that would, would allow, uh, a board to limit size growth if they suddenly have an additional five thousand square feet of floor space. Mr. McCormick? If, if we do that, we put the limitation in, then when it comes time to look at that increase in size, we might be able to take a, a traffic study at that time and the land use, uh, s- study at the same time.
Got a question over here from Mr. Travis.
Mr. McCormick, what I would suggest is that this gentleman doesn't have the authority to say what board of directors is going to do with, with.
The board of directors has the authority.
And this gentleman doesn't have that authority to make that representation to you at this time.
I know, but his representation is not, is not so significant as a limitation imposed by the land use permit granted by the city council. The city council does have the authority to place that limitation uh, when we grant the, the, the land use. So I, I don't think that the decision of the, of the council of, of the school would matter much if the, if the, uh, permit to build is limited to a city, a, a use cap of five hundred and seventy-two kids.
Mr. Snoll's coming forward to give some clarification as to what procedure, if a cap is to be considered.
My, I came forward, Mr. Chairman, because it seems to me that the, this discussion now has evolved. It seems to me this discussion has now evolved to discussion by the zoning commission. You may want to ask the applicant if there are any final comments and then close the public hearing.
Got it.
Move to four point two and continue the discussion among the members of the commission.
You're correct. Are there any last thoughts? Would you like to provide before I close the hearing? And then it becomes our discussion.
Sure. So again, the purpose of this building is to help us deliver our program better. One of the things that this will allow us to do is to give teachers their own classroom. So for example, we have an art teacher and a music teacher sharing a classroom, and you can imagine that that is a congested type of thing. It also allows us to expand our STEM and STEAM programming with our students. Again, the whole purpose of the building is to help give us an opportunity to expand our programming for our middle school students in particular. Um, and again, we are not adding students, we're not adding vehicles to our, um, to our car line. Um, faculty count stays the same. Student enrollment is slightly lower than it was last year um, at this exact moment. Um, and again, you know, we're hopeful that you will look favorably upon this so that we can, uh, again, deliver our program more effectively to our student population.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Haley.
Yes, thank you all very much for your time tonight as well. I meant to say that earlier when I opened up, so appreciate everyone being here to, to have this hearing. And, um, yes, just to reiterate, uh, the Saint George staff has, uh, really tried to put their best foot forward, be a good neighbor here and be thoughtful in this, this use and development and where they're putting it. Um, and I, I'm just trying to stay focused on what this meeting's for, not the project as a whole. Um, and as he mentioned, there's not going to be an increase in occupants or traffic, and this is really just to, um, em- embellish what they're already offering at the school and just provide a little more.
Question you brought up. Tell us about your neighbors. What had conversations have you had with them? Um, because obviously it still could be an impact to them that you now have a new building, their interpretation. Do you have a petition they signed or something in agreement? What has the neighbors to your?
We don't have any, uh, record of contact with the neighbors. Um, I don't want to speak on behalf of anybody here in, in the seats. If they've spoken to anybody or not, I know they, they're a little more familiar with who's around them. At this point, I myself have not gone and petitioned with the neighbors. Um, I was possibly expecting to maybe have some guests today. I definitely expect some at the A R C. So, um, and looking forward to hearing their comments and, you know, addressing those, uh, as appropriate. At this point though, no, we haven't, uh, talked to the neighbors. Um, but we, I guess you can say have taken additional steps, um, that we feel will add to the aesthetic in a generally pleasing way, and we are doing our best to match the existing campus with the materials and everything, so it's not going to be an abrupt change.
Part of our charge, uh, for clarification is the continuity of community, right? And so when we see commercial bumping up against houses and communities and families, um, conversation with your neighbors imperative. I have a lady back there who has her hand up. Will you please come forward after the, the message? She is an official neighbor. Well, thanks for coming. Name, address?
My name is Dobby Hankins. I live at one oh four East Castle Lane, directly across from Saint George.
So what say you?
Excuse me?
What say you? What are you thinking?
Well, first of all, both my children went to Saint George. Fantastic place. They do a great job. I've been living in that house for fifteen years. As far as the traffic is concerned, they do a, it's amazing the job they do with all those cars every morning. I call it the soccer mom parade, and I enjoy drinking my coffee and watching the whole thing, but it's very impressive. My only concern, and I expressed this to Keith Earl a month or so ago.
Who's Keith Earl?
Keith Earl's the.
What role do you play, sir?
What, what, what do you do anyway? I'm sorry. I know he does something.
All right. My name is Keith Earl. I'm the senior director of the church and I'm the director of facilities for the school.
Thank you, sir. Your concern was what?
Security lights, outdoor security lighting, light pollution interfering with my aesthetic sensibilities. As far as the existing security lights in the parking lot on East Castle Lane, uh, I think they did the best they could keeping the light confined to the, uh, but, you know, there's, there's reflected light shining, lighting up my whole front yard every night. It's not like it's terrible annoyance or anything like that. But, uh, I think if they do as good a job on this new school addition that they're proposing as they did on the other, I think it'll be fine. I just don't. I like my dark.
That's what Castle Hills is all about.
Yeah.
So we have the architect here, so how do you address what he just brought up for us to understand it? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Oh, did, did you have anything else to add? You're good. So, um, we, that was an assumption we had made, you know, just understanding Castle Hills and even, you know, just look around and you can tell that's, that's one of the one or one of the many great things about this, this town is the, the. you know, just look around and you can tell that's, that's one of the one, or one of the many great things about this, this town is the, the trees and at night it gets quiet. You hear the bugs and it's nice and dark. So, um, keeping all that in mind, we really did minimum, minimal lighting on this project. And if, I, I believe I included the photometrics in there and you can see the light spread is really localized to each fixture. And I don't believe any of the spread even gets past the immediate perimeter gate of this modular building and garden. So we don't expect light to trespass off the property lines and we'll keep, it, it'll be low level lighting, downlit. No uplighting.
Appreciate it. Sir, you want to conclude before we close the public hearing? Just some of the thoughts that you were going to do?
Yes, just one, um, addition. Uh, Mr. Earl and I did have some outreach to our neighbors very informally and just let them know, here are some things that we're thinking about, the project that we're thinking about and planning, and solicited their input and feedback, um, again, to try and do things like.
Like good neighbors do.
Be, yes, we want to be good neighbors. Um, we want the design to fit with the sensibilities of the school and of the neighborhood. We want the lighting to be minimal and respectful of our neighbors. Um, and the feedback that we got was appreciative and, um, so hopefully we're doing our part to be good neighbors there.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seven oh five?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry about that. Question to whom?
This gentleman right here. The, I think there are two houses that are going to be demolished.
They have been demolished. Yes, sir.
They were unoccupied and had been unoccupied for a period of time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven oh five, that concludes our public hearing. Uh, and we'll move on to four point two with the discussion and possible action on resolution number two zero two four zero six zero four on an application request for a special use permit from Susan on behalf of St. George Episcopal Church for a special use permit to install a modular building for school facilities at six nine zero zero and six nine zero four West Avenue, Castle Hills, Texas, seven eight two one three. More particularly described as lot twenty, block nine, county block five seven seven eight, St. George Episcopal Church subdivision, according to the plat thereof, recorded in volume nine, five, four, seven, page one, one, nine, deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas. So now council, we have an opportunity to talk. So.
I'll offer a motion for discussion.
Yes, sir. Please do.
Maybe that we approve the proposed resolution attached to the application with the modification that we limit the student body size to five hundred and seventy-two students, uh, for the next five years.
That's an amendment. Do I hear a second?
It's not an amendment, sir. It's a motion straight up.
Okay, straight up.
Still needs a second.
Still needs a second to at least go into discussion. I'll second it for discussion. Let's move forward. So you had questions, sir?
I've got a question, I guess more for the city attorney. Is this within our purview? Is this something we, we can do?
You're making a recommendation to the governing body. Um, I, I think this is close enough to use that it is within the parameters that are permitted. The governing body can consider if this motion is adopted, the governing body can, you know, take it into consideration. Um, when it considers your recommendation, which would ordinarily be at the next council meeting one week from tonight. So I think the utilization of the building and Mr. McCormick's questions were, were really centered on that. And this seems to be, to be relevant to the utilization of the building.
Uh, tha- thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Snell, I have a question. The property that is included in this proposal, is it included in the original plat of lot twenty?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Although I second the motion, I kind of share the thoughts that placing the cap is probably not, um, the best way to go. I think, you know, I mean, although I'm a, a very liberal person, limitations on, on companies and organizations, even though they said they were there, just doesn't sit right with me. I think it's, it's, you know, I'll leave that to the traffic study and others, but I, I can't support a cap. I, I think it's a little too, uh, ostentatious, right? It's like, well, because here's the reality. We don't know if they're gonna, I mean, they have the extra space. That's fine, but whenever you tell a school or an entity or business, you can only have so many people. I know we have different rules for that. Um, is there a back to staff, is there an occupancy number? Do they have to get a C O V? And what is the C O V state today?
This, the C O V is per, is per facility to begin with. And the occupancy load is determined by the fire chief, who will have a say at their plan review on whether a sprinkler system, uh, is necessary. Pertaining to, pertaining directly to the anticipated occupancy load. But if you're asking if there's anything in code, in international code, that, that actually is kind of vetted out by the fire chief.
So, I guess that may be the checks and balance that we have skipped, that it still needs to be reviewed because they're gonna have to redo the C O V with the addition of forty-six hundred feet, square feet more. And the fire chief has to figure out, well, are they gonna do it this way, that way? But it's gonna, we, so let's say the fire chief agrees and says the occupancy rate is gonna be for two hundred and fifty people. They're re aligning people within the school system. And, and that means the, the main building will have X amount and the other has two hundred capacity. So it could in itself limited based on the size. And that would be the question.
No, I don't think so. I, my, my point is that the fire chief has already ruled on the existing building size as being adequate to, to cover, uh, five hundred and fifty-two students. If that's what your current body is, student body is. And if we add five thousand square feet to that, there's, the fire chief would just say that they could put however many he can fit in there. Cause he didn't have limitations on the, on the, uh, number of people that are present except as to fire. So, uh, I think the fire chief has already ruled on the, on the adequacy of the existing space to cover the existing student body. And if we add five thousand square feet to that, I think we're gonna add a substantial number of student body possibilities that we could have this, the school put in. And the problem is that the school is not in a real wonderful place for traffic in the mornings and in the evenings. And our current situation is that that traffic in the morning and the evening is almost debilitating to that part of West Avenue is concerned for, for people coming and going to school. So I, I'm concerned that if we had five thousand square feet, we could probably add a hundred students real easily to that. To what they've already got on board and, uh, find ourselves in a situation where our traffic problem is, is beyond control. The cops are saying we don't want to, we don't want to impose any limitations now. Uh, when do you want to impose them? After it's too late?
I hear you, Mr. Bueller.
So I, I think that, I think that we have concerns, but as to that, as I understand it, we didn't get a second to the motion.
I second it just for the discussion. Absolutely.
Okay.
So you're there. Mr. Bueller.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. No problem.
I was gonna say we might need to go back and restate that.
No.
I, I tend to agree with, with. I tend to.
Concern for the, the traffic in the morning and in the evening and possibility that the school could on its own decide to raise the, the size of the student body significantly.
I hear you. Thank you, sir.
And I, I tend to agree with, with Chairman McCormick that if it's within our purview, we, we, we argue we should, should set so, some limit. I don't agree necessarily that it be the current population bu- of students, but, but to allow for some expansion and increase because they, they will ju- just as a matter of expand a bit above the current population. But, you know, within a, you know, adding twenty or thirty students, sure, but not, you know, uh, not, not fifty or a hundred. Because it will impact the, the traffic. It will impact the parking. It will impact, uh, and will impact the neighborhood uh, by, by adding a significant number of students. And I think it's, I don't want to say incredulous, but, but it's difficult to believe, as Mr. Chairman McCormick pointed out, that with this expanded space, eh, they're just going to, they're, cause they're gonna move the current things to this building, leaving empty space and they're gonna use it. They're, they're gonna use it for, for more students and, and classroom. They, they just are. It's just gonna happen. I, I know they, they, and I believe they genuinely believe today that they, they probably won't, but, but I, so, you know, I respectfully, I, I, I'd like to hear other, other committees, but I'm, I'm tend to perhaps, uh, either amend or, or add an amendment to, uh, to Mr. McCormick, Chairman McCormick's, uh, proposal as far as the, the number on the cap.
Mr. Mohica, any thoughts?
No, not at right now.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, any thoughts?
I think that there might be a recommendation along the lines of Mr. McCormick's thing. I don't think that we can make it a requirement. I don't think that this gentleman that's here tonight can speak for his board of directors. Just that simple.
So, Mr. Jackson's looking for perhaps an amendment to yours that would state a cap of some sort. As Mr. Bueller talked about, maybe not exactly so straightforward as the number you reached out. What, what do you think?
Well, I think that if we, if we don't put a number in the cap, we might as well blow it off and not do anything.
So the get, the discussion is what does a cap look like? If you're gonna put a cap, is it arbitrary based on what they are today, which is five seventy-two?
No, what they are today is five fifty-two, if I remember right. Is that correct?
No, five seventy-two.
Five seventy.
Say again? Five seventy-two.
Five seventy-two.
They're, they're, he said they're, he said they're at five thirty-eight today.
Five thirty-eight today.
We'll be next, next school here. They're at five forty.
Five thirty-eight to, to five seventy-two is a significant jump, ten percent. They're, they're a little less. So I think.
I guess I missed that.
Is that okay with you?
I, I missed that. I, I thought that, I, I guess I missed the, the numbers wise. I, I thought that it was, it was the cap current level. If you're increasing it, if your suggestion or your, your proposal is that they, uh, they allowed so, some increase to their cap, to their current student number, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Well, there's no, that's, th- this cap is thirty, uh, thirty students or so, thirty-four students above what they currently have on board.
Well, then I misunderstood.
Give them a little bit of room for flexibility.
Then I misunderstood.
Without opening it up to an unlimited gross rate over the next five years.
So we have a motion?
I think that there's another thing here and just, they've got five forty now. They've got capacity for five seventy-two, as I understand it. They're not running five seventy-two. They're running less than that at this point.
Yeah.
Although it may increase less than ten percent over the next couple of years, but that's something that is gonna be, gonna float. You're not gonna have a hundred percent occupancy all the time.
No, but this, in order to maintain viability, the school has to maintain student body at a reasonable size. Enough to support the cost of, of the operation, the building, the, the staff and so forth. And, and, and I think that the idea of going to five seventy-two is just, it's an arbitrary number that I believe you pulled out of your hip pocket a while ago when we were talking, uh, but five thirty-eight's not bad, but five seventy-two gives them a little bit of room to, to flex up. If you want a bigger number, let's put a bigger number in there. If you don't want to put a half, a, a cap in, we don't. But it's not our decision. We're just making a recommendation to the, the governing body.
Correct.
They can decide whatever they want to do, uh, but the, the cap gives them, gives them inclination to decide something related to the cap.
So we have a motion. And let's be clear. It comes with a cap for the next five years?
Five years.
Five-year cap of five hundred and seventy-two.
Students.
Students. So we have a motion, discussion, any discussion, discussion? If not, we'll go straight to the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Three, two passes. So appreciate y'all coming down. And this concludes, um, we move straight to adjournment, gentlemen? I need a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a reminder about the July and August meetings.
Yes, sir. We will take our summer break, July and August and come back strong in September.
Taking a vacation in here.
I appreciate y'all coming out tonight. Thank you all so much. Appreciate you listening to us. Uh, motion to adjourn, Mr. Oh, do it again.
Motion adjourn.
Kind of motion to the second McCormick and Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all at seven twenty.